I will call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for September 5th, 2023. Misty, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next agenda item is correction and/or acceptance of the city council regular meeting minutes from August 15th of 2023. And I note there was an update, just to add the address for one of our public commenters from last month. Does anyone have any corrections or comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll accept those into the record, and we will move on to correspondence. Mr. Fields, I'll start with you. Always getting his book out.
Okay, I got a pretty good list. I received six emails on the protection of our mature trees in Lake Mills and the support of an ad hoc committee. I had nine different emails on bike safety and support of bike lanes in the city. Received an invite to tour the Summer Ridge facility that now it's being completed, the new apartments. Received two emails on the Club 55, and also received an email on the Jefferson County Fall Cleanup Sweep on September 15th and 16th. You should take care of me.
Thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Okay, yes, I also had a series of emails on the bike lanes and bike connectivity. I had an email about Club 55, about Sandy Beach, about the community center, about the Jefferson County Fall Clean Sweep, which to be noted is not for electronics, it's just for households and agricultural waste. A meeting about the Joint Rock Lake Committee, Pickle Wall, a group meeting invite to speak with some constituents. I also toured Summer Ridge, and I had emails about the trees and the ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Very similar to what Mr. Fields and Mrs. Bishop said. The only other thing I had was a College Street construction email.
Great, thank you. Ms. Quinnow?
Yes, I have very similar emails. I had seven emails about the bike policy, and I had six emails, maybe even more than that. I just read them in the pieces, but there was usually a string regarding the ad hoc for trees. Email from Rock Lake Activity Center, email regarding the listening session that you and I are hosting on Saturday, an email regarding the trees on College Street for a particular constituent who has got questions about trees and what trees can go in and where. And that pretty much covers it.
Okay, I think many of us received a lot of the same emails regarding the mature trees, bike lanes, Club 55, Jefferson County Fall Cleanup. I also received some constituent contacts regarding techniques for removing invasive buckthorn, the street tree master plan, more specifically and separate from the ad hoc committee. And let's see, I was invited to the, Mrs. Bishop and I had the opportunity to tour Summer Ridge Apartments, and then I was invited to their grand opening, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. And I'll close with correspondence regarding my published opinion piece in the Lake Mills Leader this last week, and mentioned that Ms. Quinnow and I will be hosting a listening session on September 9th, which is this Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the library. So finish your pyramid run or walk, and come on over and tell us what's on your mind. So we'll look forward to seeing folks on the 9th. Okay, that's our correspondence. So we'll move, next agenda item is questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet that's provided at the podium. If there's anyone attending online who wants to speak, please type your name and address in the chat feature. Okay, go ahead, Leanne.
Hello. I am and have been concerned, I'm Leanne Schwantlenner, 523 College Street, Lake Mills. I am and have been concerned about all the trees in Lake Mills since I moved here 34 years ago, and certainly since the Main and Lake Street reconstructions occurred, and now the College Street reconstruction. I am here to encourage you to vote yes this evening to the formation of an ad hoc committee comprised of citizens and city staff to work to preserve the mature trees and good choices in selecting new trees to replace the ones that have been removed. This is a win-win situation to have an ad hoc committee that is both citizens and city staff. Citizens have input in the process, which makes them feel part of big decisions, and it provides a sense of pride in preserving and protecting mature trees, which we all know the value of. City staff receive valuable assistance from an interested and most importantly motivated public. There are many citizens in the community with specialized knowledge and skills needed for this kind of committee. It provides a positive and proactive approach to an ongoing issue. If you think that there aren't going to be tree complaints ever again, and I don't think that you do, but let's consider that at this time it seems very much to be resistance conflict, people who are not happy. To create this committee would help with that feeling, and it would be, again, a positive, a proactive way to approach the trees of Lake Mills when reconstructions occur, and they're going to be continuing on, which is great. We need infrastructure repair, but we also need our mature trees. Your yes vote tonight will ensure that the ad hoc committee will be approved and instituted as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And Leanne, I don't think you mentioned your address.
Oh, 523 College Street.
Thanks. Okay, next.
Hi, my name is Aaron Mock, W-8199 Bridle Path in Lake Mills. Thank you all for taking the time tonight to take our comments. I'm here to encourage you as well to include additional bicycle language and complete maps in the future-looking plan, the commission plan for 2040. It's hard to imagine a 2040 plan that doesn't include additional details around cycling infrastructure within Lake Mills. Lake Mills is an amazing community, and it's grown a lot. If you look at just the demographic breakup of Lake Mills, the number of kids that are here, the number of young adults that really benefit from using multimodal transportation, not just cars. It's a way to basically include the whole community in the same infrastructure. It's safe for kids, it creates additional infrastructure for safety, it's less expensive maintaining bicycle paths, it's less expensive than maintaining traditional roadways. And as the community grows, we need more infrastructure that will connect our important places in the community to increase business and transportation for everybody. So I would encourage additional information being included in the commission plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Rich Franek, 1110 Fairway Court, Lake Mills. I am the vice president for the advisory board for Club 55. My message here this evening is to tell you a little bit about the services we offer, kind of how we structure and operate, and then how maybe we can expand forward, moving forward in the community. Demographics of 2020 census in the 53551 area code, 20% to 25% of the people are 55-plus. So we feel we have a large community of people that we can serve. So how do we go about doing that? We offer a number of services, some we would call essential services, like healthcare, things like blood pressure screening, foot care, exercise classes, things of that nature. We also offer things like educational opportunities. We'll bring in somebody that talks about a particular topic that might be pertinent to senior citizens. In addition, we like to do like fun things. So now what we do, like luncheons, trips, try to encourage socialization, things of that nature. And that's a key aspect for senior citizens, especially those who are isolated potentially. That's a real benefit to them. And last of all, it's not just about us, we actually try to reach out to the community. And just this afternoon, we met, we had a subcommittee meet with legendary Lake Mills. How can we help them with some of their events in the community, especially the upcoming, which is night out? So it's not just about how can we be served, but how can we reach out to others in the community? So how do we operate? We're a club. We're actually under the guise of the Retruration Department of Lake Mills Area School District, and we actually rent space from the Rock Lake Activity Center. There is some confusion, like, do we own it? No, we don't. We actually pay monthly rent for that facility, and we're thankful for that facility. It actually offers a number of services that kind of support the programs that we offer. We have a dedicated room there with a library, a socialization room, things of that nature. But I do foresee we're going to get to a point where we're probably going to maybe expand out the size of that facility. For example, we have an exercise class that meets twice a week, has roughly 25 to 30 people. That already fills up a gym. We have social events and luncheons that sometimes drop to 100 people. So, you know, we're trying to take a look at how maybe we can be a participant with other organizations and areas in the community that would support what we would call basically an intergenerational, multipurpose facility, of which the senior center would be a part of that, not a sole part of that. So anyway, that's kind of my pitch for the evening, and if anyone has any questions, feel free to field them. And if not, I believe through emails, you all should have received, I believe, a long letter like this. So, I didn't author it, so don't blame me.
Thank you. And that letter kind of went through some of the history of some conversations about establishing a community center in Lake Mills.
Yep, yep. So, okay. Any other things?
Questions for Mr. Franek?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Sorry, I didn't ask on the other speakers if anyone had questions. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Anita Martin. We live at 261 Pinnacle Drive in Lake Mills. Thank you very much for bringing forward the Resolution 2361 regarding the maintenance and preservation of city trees. I strongly support the establishment of an ad hoc committee. I think it's important to consider options for short-term and long-term maintenance and preservation of our beautiful city trees. It was mentioned earlier that we do have a county clean sweep event. It takes place Friday, September 15th, from 3:00 until 5:30 at the municipal, the Public Works Building in Watertown, and then also Saturday, September 16th, from 8:00 a.m. until 11:30. So this is a great time to clean out things. If you have any materials that are marked hazardous or flammable, this is the event, it's just $10 for whatever hazardous materials you can put into one vehicle. So it's a great deal. Switching gears, we're excited about a fun-filled event that's coming to Lake Mills Saturday, September 23rd. Rotary Club of Lake Mills is having an all-day music festival called Music in the Mills, and it's taking place at the Selgin Grounds. We'll have four great bands, the Best Westerns, which is like a western swing band, V-Funk, which plays things like Stevie Wonder, Pilot, and Almighty Vinyl. And if you were at the pop-up concert a couple of years ago in August, Almighty Vinyl played there at that time. We'll have a beverage tent with local beer and wine and soda. Food carts offering everything from Doyle's Dogs, barbecue, tacos, mini donuts, frozen bananas on a stick, frozen cheesecake on a stick, and hopefully burgers as well. The cost is just $15 for the day in advance, or $20 at the door, and we also wanted to announce that kids under 12 are free. The premier sponsors for Music in the Mills are Greenwood's Bank and Amy Winkelman and Associates Incorporated, American Family Insurance. All the proceeds after expenses will benefit our local community. So please come on out if you have a few hours to spare or all day, and invite family and friends. This is a great opportunity to have fun, to dance, sing, and showcase what our community has to offer. Ticket information is available at www.lakemillsrotaryclub.com. Thank you.
Any questions for Anita? Thank you very much. Rotary's been very active this summer, a lot of activities that they've sponsored, so we really appreciate that.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Neil Purish. I live at 431 North Main Street. I'm here today to talk in support of adding bicycle language and bicycle route map to the 2024 city master plan. I thought I'd talk a little bit tonight about kind of what bicycling has meant to me and my family. We've lived here about 15 years now. All three kids of mine have gone through grade school and high school here, and bicycling has meant a lot to us. They use bicycles to get to school. It's been a tool for freedom to get around the city, because there's lots of cities in this area where it is difficult to get to friends' houses and to school. But we're fortunate to live in a community where, definitely in parts of it, you know, you can bike to your friend's house, you could bike to the lake to go fishing. So it has been excellent in that regard. For myself, for my wife, I used to bike almost every day to work, not as much anymore. I know my wife does that still a lot. I bike to get chores done and other things. It's another, it's a great asset to be able to do that in this town. And we have the Graciel Drumlin Trail. You see a lot of people using that from a standpoint. I was once the assistant scouts master, and I helped get everybody one of their major badges, which is the 50-mile ride badge, and utilizing the streets, because part of it is you have to get the kids down the street, and they have to, you know, use all their proper signage and whatnot. Using the streets of Lake Mills to do that was awesome. So I just wanted to give you a little context of how, you know, biking is beneficial, and I hope that we can continue to preserve and build upon what we have here in Lake Mills. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thanks. And I see we have someone online. Mr. Mead, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you so much for having the capability of having me via Zoom today. My name is Colin Mead, and I represent the Wisconsin Bike Fed as the Government Affairs Manager. And tonight, I'm here just to speak briefly about, we, our organization also sent in a letter of support, so I won't take up too much time here. But again, thank you for having me. The Wisconsin Bike Fed would like to voice its support for the city council's recommendation to include bike routes and the bicycle plan map in the updated comprehensive plan. The recent community survey for the comprehensive plan showed that 86, over 86% of the community supported this implementation to better connect. Bicycle plan map and bike route information in the comprehensive plan, the city of Lake and the bike future grants for legislation, infrastructure at both federal and state levels. This particularly includes the TAP program, or Transportation Alternatives Program, grants, which the Bike Fed works very closely with communities around the state on. Just recently, this past spring, the Wisconsin Bike Federation helped over a dozen communities apply for TAP and STARS grants to achieve more bicycle infrastructure and bicycle planning and safe routes management across the state. With Lake Mills taking on a greater endeavor underneath the TAP grant and the STARS grants, the Bike Fed would be more than happy to assist in continuing this connectivity of Lake Mills. The importance of bike infrastructure and trails for Wisconsin communities cannot be understated. While the obvious impacts of increased community recreation opportunities are clear, bike trails do so much more for the community that they serve, including better public health, increasing economic transportation benefits, enhancing environmental and conservation efforts, and even establishing a sense of identity within the community, as others have already mentioned this evening. By investing in cycling infrastructure and trails, we invest in our residents, our communities, and our state, and the Bike Fed supports Lake Mills in doing the same. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mead? Okay, is there any other public comment tonight? I don't see anyone else online. Okay, no one else in the room? Okay, we'll close the public comment then for this evening. Move on to agenda item number seven, which is the city manager's report.
The report's included in your packet. It's online, and I passed out one just prior to the meeting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So we have a report with some general updates of projects that staff have been working on in the meetings that you've attended in the last month. Are there any questions for Mr. Daley? No? Okay. Thank you very much for that. The next agenda item, number eight, is council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. So we have quite a few. Tonight, we have the Plan Commission from July 25th, Parks Board from May 17th, Police and Fire Commission from July 20th, and the Library Board meeting minutes from June 19th and July 10th. So are there any committee members that want to provide any additional information on their boards, or any questions on any of the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will accept all of those minutes into the record. Thank you, everyone. And we will move on to council business. So our first item under council business tonight is a presentation by Ryan Brothers with their quarterly EMS report. So we'll have Cody Letson come up, and he'll give his presentation to us this evening. Do we need to suspend the rules, or we're okay since he's on the agenda? Okay, great. Welcome.
All right. Thanks for having me come and talk to you guys. Just so everyone knows, my name's Cody Letson. I am the service director for Ryan Brothers EMS, and I oversee our operation here in Lake Mills. My plan, I work with the city manager, Mr. Daley. I give him monthly reports, but I wanted to come before you guys quarterly, just to kind of give you guys updates on everything that's happened in EMS-related in the community. I kind of planned this one early, just because we're fresh into our transition phase, and just kind of give you guys a brief update. You guys see on the agenda the submission that I made. So really, I just want to touch on a couple things. The transition went extremely smooth, and a lot of that I owe to the command staff at the fire department. They did an excellent job welcoming us into their station, making us feel welcome, working with us, and everything's really gone flawlessly so far. Communication between city administration and the fire department command staff has been excellent, and so really, everything's been running extremely smooth, and huge credit to them for helping us facilitate that. Items that we're working on right now, we're working with the city IT staff just to establish some internet, dedicated internet for our EMS staff for doing reports and things like that. So that's really the only pending item we have related to that sort of thing. Our crews have really enjoyed getting out into the community. We've got to attend quite a few events already. Our staff love to interact with the community. If any of you guys have events or hear of events that you're interested in having our ambulance crews stop by, meet with people, or anything like that, we're always happy to do it. So we really enjoy that aspect of being part of your community. You can see kind of a list of events that we've already attended, and we are always looking for more community involvement. Training, we've got to get involved with the training at the fire department, as well as our own training specific to the Lake Mills community. The fire department's worked really well with us, kind of integrating our service with their own. So that's been a huge plus. Anytime we can do that, trainings, those trainings together, interaction with their medical direction, and our medical direction has been great. So communication there also excellent. I've got to work with Mr. Daley on a few things. We've recently had a few townships approach us about interest in our service and how we can maybe get involved with their communities as well. So both Aztlan and the town of Deerfield have reached out. Those are things that Mr. Daley and I are looking at and discussing how those could impact the community here, the benefits that that might have for our service and the city of Lake Mills. We've had no quality of care concerns or service concern request voiced to us as of yet, and everything's been going very smooth. All of our interactions with the community have been really positive. They're very welcoming and very happy to have us here. Just a few numbers for you guys. I know July, we had 43 total calls. August, I got that information today. We had 49 total calls. Our Page 2 en route time has just been right around 90 seconds, which is great. And a vast majority of our calls, we've been able to be on scene with a paramedic in less than five minutes. So that's a huge benefit to the community, we feel. So those are just kind of some of the background stuff that's happened for us, but I wanted also to give you guys the opportunity to ask me any questions that you may have had, or community members have brought to you that you'd like me to answer about our service and how it's getting off the ground here.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Letson? Yes, Mr. Waters?
I don't really have a question, but I do want to thank you for coming tonight, and the information that you provided as far as the response time is outstanding. Thank you for stepping up and making that happen, being on the scene in less than five minutes. I'm sure that's saving lives, so thank you.
Absolutely.
The feedback that I've received from the community's been overwhelmingly positive.
Good.
I've asked a couple people from the fire department as well, how things are going with EMS, and it's all been positive news. So thank you for a great start.
Yeah, absolutely. We're happy to be here, and like I said, I can't say enough good things. Chief Ross came in and took over, and he's been doing an excellent job. Our communication with him has been great, so he's really been a positive impact on the department as well, so.
Other questions? Comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Letson.
No problem.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah.
And we'll expect you again then in December, it sounds like?
Yep, absolutely.
And then every quarter?
In the meantime, obviously, I'll come to these council meetings, and I can answer any questions you guys have. If anything comes up in the meantime, I'm always available to answer questions from anyone in the community, or anyone on the council that has questions or anything that they would like to discuss, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the smooth transition. And Drake, please extend our thanks to the fire department staff, and particularly Chief Ross and Captain Data for their work. Okay, on to agenda item 9B, which is a discussion decision on approving the appointment of a successor agent for the Handy Spot 101 LLC. Staff, can you tell us about that?
Misty, would you be able to fill the council in on these items?
Yes, both items, B and C, are appointments of successor agents. When there is a, with a Class A liquor, it, and beer, it requires that there be an agent. The agents that were approved have moved on, so the owners have named these new individuals for both of them as the successor agent. Everything's complete, background check is fine, there's zero concern from staff.
Okay, so let's just take these one at a time. We just need a motion and a second and a vote on each of these. So if we can have a motion on Letter B for Handy Spot 101. So if we can have a motion on Letter B for Handy Spot 101 LLC.
I move to approve the appointment of a successor agent, Gaganpreet Singh, for Handy Spot 101 LLC.
Second.
Second.
So I think Mr. Waters beat you to it, so I've got a motion from Ms. Quidnaw, second from Mr. Waters. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Thank you. And then Agenda Item Nine C is similar. This would be for the successor agent for Walgreens. Can we have a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of successor agent Abby Swanson to Walgreens Company, Walgreens on North Main Street.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnaw, second by Mrs. Bishop. Any questions or comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Thank you. Our next Agenda Item, Letter D, is a Resolution 23-59, bid award for a TAP grant, pedestrian connectivity improvements. Is there a motion, please?
Can we get some staff comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. You do motion first, so that's fine. We can go to staff.
Sure. The apparent little bidder letter, as well as the bid tab, is included in your packet. We received a little bid of approximately $515,000. That is $16,000 below the anticipated cost, which leaves those, which, anything above that $531,000 anticipated cost would have been 100% the city's responsibility. Since it's below that estimated cost, it all qualifies for that 80/20 federal matching grant, which is part of the TAP grant program, as then, as well, leaves $16,000 available for any change orders or amendments that may come up during the course of the project. So Strand reviewed the apparent little bidder, will leave them to be responsible, and recommends approval of the award.
Thank you. And I think I did skip a step, because usually, we have Misty read the title before we have a motion. Do we need to go back and do that, or? Okay. Okay. So Misty, why don't you read the title then for Resolution 23-59?
Resolution 23-59, authorizing the city manager toward the TAP grant pedestrian connectivity project and execute an agreement with BMD Concrete Innovations.
I'll make a motion authorizing the city manager toward the TAP grant pedestrian connectivity project and execute an agreement with BMD Construction Innovations.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Waters, second by Ms. Quidnaw. Any discussion or questions for staff? Okay. I'm not seeing any. Then can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, Letter E, is Resolution 23-60, related to the county library tax exemption. Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-60, resolution requesting exemption from county library tax.
Your motion?
I move to approve Resolution 23-60.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. Mr. Drake, can you, or Mr. Daly, can you tell us about this?
Sure. This is an annual approval exempting the city of Lake Mills from the county library tax. Cities that provide a municipal library and fund it to an adequate level are exempt from the county library tax levy. So this is an annual approval, which is required so that the city of Lake Mills residents do not pay the county library tax in addition to funding the library levy of the city.
Okay. And I think we've approved these in prior years, so we've probably seen this exemption previously. Are there any questions or comments for staff on this? So it looks like, based on the letter, there would be, we need to have budgeted at least $200,032 in our expenditures for next year to qualify for the exemption. Am I reading that right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Okay. No further questions? Let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-60 regarding the county library tax exemption.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Moving on to Letter F, this is Resolution 23-61, establishing an ad hoc committee on city tree policy. So Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-61, establishing an ad hoc committee to make recommendations concerning citizen and city goals for the maintenance and preservation of the city trees.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 23-61, establishing an ad hoc committee to make recommendations concerning citizen and city goals for the maintenance and preservation of the city trees.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnaw, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. So based on our prior meetings, I believe this resolution was put together by Mr. Waters as the lead, so would you like to kick off the discussion or the introduction of it?
Yeah. Ms. Quidnaw also had input.
Great.
I see that there is a gap still in here. The second, whereas, the city of Lake Mills Forest staff maintains and preserves, the thought was, we put in how many city trees in the community lawn, or tree lawns and park systems. Do you happen to know that number, Mr. Daly?
2,656 trees is the urban forest.
Can you repeat that number again?
2,656.
Okay. So the thought here was that the last three projects, large-scale infrastructure projects for roads, have met quite a bit of feedback from the community as far as trees that were coming down. That included the South Main Street project, the...
Mulberry.
Mulberry.
I wasn't thinking Mulberry. That would be four. Mulberry.
East Lake Street.
East Lake Street, and now College Street was the thought there, but it sounds like there's more, actually. So the thought was, with community feedback, that it makes sense to put together an ad hoc committee to form a group of citizens and some city staff to review this situation and write some guidelines to help improve the situation moving forward. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Quidnaw?
Um, no. I think you did a good job of summarizing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any staff comment that you want to provide, Drake, before we start our discussion?
The only clarification I would add, I know it says that I'll submit five names for the city council. At this point, I don't intend to submit any city staff as names as voting members of the committee. I firmly believe that staff should advise and participate in the process, but that recommendations and policy should be set by either council members or non-city staff appointees. If the council very much desires to have city staff sit on it as voting members, I will, of course, put forward some names for you, but my preference would be that city staff attend the meetings, provide structure and information and advice, but not be voting members.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion on this resolution?
Mrs. Bishop? Do we just want to have a motion to replace the number here, or is it understood that that'll just be written in?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, maybe as we go along, we might have other motions, but I think we can certainly correct that number of trees in the second whereas. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So I'll move to do that. I move to amend Resolution 23-61, striking the XXX in the second whereas and replacing it with 2,656.
Second. Mr. Fields?
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields, to insert the correct number of city trees in the second whereas of this resolution. Any discussion? Okay. All in favors, please raise your hand. Okay. So that's five oh, vote to make that, insert that information. Any other discussion? I've got a few comments, if no one else does. I appreciate you bringing this forward, and obviously, we've gotten lots of citizen input. I think we've had several meetings now where people have specifically asked for an ad hoc committee, and I think the maintenance and preservation of the mature trees in our city is a very important issue for us to look at, particularly when it comes to street reconstruction. One of the things I was wondering about, as I looked at this resolution, is it looks like it's larger in scope than just looking at street reconstruction and utility projects, and I'm concerned that that's going to be a big scope that might not give us some, the information that we need for the next, to help us in time for designing the next street reconstruction. So I just was wondering, Mr. Waters or Ms. Quidnaw in particular, if you had thoughts about that or what your, there's not a real tight timeline on this, and so I'm wondering how do we make sure that that need is met?
It did also include trees that are in the parks as well, I guess is written into this as well. The next street project is not next year, it's the year after, because the project for this next year has been pushed to the following year. So I think there's ample time.
So I wonder, Mr. Daly, if you can clarify, I guess I was under the assumption that, so Milton Street would be, I think, is the next in the queue for reconstruction in 2025. When would design work need to start for that?
It will occur, it will occur in, well, we will survey it this year, because it was included in it and can, you know, begin preliminary design, but we would hold off on finalizing any plans until this process was complete. But we can continue with certain aspects of the street design and then incorporate the recommendations, and then whatever the city council approves at a later date before construction begins. So we have, we do have time to make these considerations and come up with a plan, but we will, we'll begin surveying and preliminary design yet this year, once we get that schedule finalized and notification out to residents. We do have some electrical work perhaps next year, after we see what that looks like. If that came back to me, and this was ongoing, and it had resulted in the removal of trees, I would hold off on implementing, you know, that until it had been weighed in on. So we won't move forward with something that would result in action in opposition to what the city council may end up adopting at the end of this process. So we'll remain flexible with how we move forward with design and any other preliminary work we would do before the full reconstruction in 2025.
Okay. Thank you for that. Ms. Quidnaw?
To follow up with your wonder, I just wanted to point out that in Section Two, there are some pretty specific expectations for this particular ad hoc, one of them being creating a report where the committee should consider a strategic framework that could be used for the management of Lake Mills city trees with input from the city staff, departments, boards, committees, or commissions, as well as documentation and reports already prepared. I think it's important that we acknowledge, yes, there are trees that are going to be needing evaluation when there's cities, there's city street reconstruction, but there are other situations in which city trees will need to be considered. I think it's important that we have a very clear-cut and understandable policy for anyone to understand why is a tree removed, under what circumstances have we established to make sure that there's going to be enough understanding that, yes, it was a mature tree, however, it was dying of a disease, or it's going to impede something. There needs to be something very specific so that when questions are brought up, city staff or ourselves have the ability to say, well, it went through the ad hoc committee, and this is what they found.
Thank you for that, and I guess honestly, that language in Section Two is what caused me to feel that the scope is very broad and goes way beyond just looking at street reconstruction projects. And so again, I'm trying to think about making sure that we get some results from this committee in time for the design work on the next street reconstruction project, and I'm wondering if, you know, looking at the scope would be a way to do that. So we know that our Facilities and Grounds Director's been working with our city arborist on updating the master street tree plan, which is, you know, overdue in being addressed. And so my thinking is that that can happen on its own process and go through the Parks Board, can have its public input there, and that deals with the larger picture of how we manage urban trees in the city, and ask this committee to especially work on the issues related to maintenance and preservation of our existing mature trees when it comes to streets. So again, I guess I'm feeling a lot of wanting to get recommendations sooner related to street reconstruction, and so my suggestion would be to narrow the scope of this, to focus on that with a goal of getting that done by, say, next June 1st, and then allow the update to the master street tree plan, which is for replacement when a tree does need to come down, and that that could move along on a parallel path, go through the Parks Board, have its own public input process, and together, those would be overall looking at the tree issues. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be only looking to one side or the other. So I guess those are, I'd like to make sure that this committee can be successful and that they can really focus and that the staff can support them in getting something ideally completed in, say, a nine-month period, rather than having kind of an indefinite timeframe and taking on a larger scope, and then we maybe don't have the information we need in time for reconstruction. So I don't know if anyone else has thought or reaction to that.
I know Mrs. Bishop had a question, but I was gonna go back. Go ahead.
Well, my question to you, Mr. Waters and Ms. Quidnaw, is, it's maybe not even a question, more of a comment, just I know Mr. Schreiner, the Grounds and Facilities Director, has a whole map in his head, and he's starting to write it out and lay it down of all of these trees in the city, and, you know, what he wants to replace them with when the time comes, and how they need to be treated when we're planting new trees, like what type of water they get, how often to be watered. It's very intricate. So along those lines, I don't know if Mr. Schreiner was consulted in creating the scope of this. I might want to hear some of his input, although I know we're considering it tonight. And I share a little bit of Ms. Curler's concerns too about just having a recommendation ready for how the road work and reconstruction needs to be approached to preserve the mature trees that currently exist, because that has been the main crux of what we've been hearing from constituents. And so having that plan ready to go the next time we're going to tear up a street or a sidewalk, I think, is most important at this point in time, and I would be open to writing in that prioritization in either a whereas clause or a section here for this ad hoc committee.
May I, Ms. Curler?
Yes, Mr. Schreiner.
My, I have similar concerns regarding the scope of the resolution specifically, and the questions that... And the questions that I have arise from interpretation of the existing ordinance on trees, on the master tree plan. I'm not certain that this has been reviewed thoroughly and that it is parallel to what your goals as expressed in the resolution are. So I would kind of pause there and make sure that we're all on the same page with regard to existing ordinance, with regard to existing policy, and form a plan moving forward within the right scope. If you are looking to address, to form an ad hoc committee to address future maintenance and reconstruction projects, that's one thing that's pretty distinct in my mind. And getting further direction or recommendation from an ad hoc committee to your hands for use as you see fit is solely, is definitely appropriate with regard to taking power or authority or arguably amending existing ordinance by a resolution, that's not allowed. So some pause there.
Mr. Waters, did you want to respond to some of the discussion?
On the, I think there's two points that I'd address. On the timeframe, there is a six-month process where the committee is expected to give a, to submit a report to the city council at that time and to, to provide progress. And I would expect during that time period, they would maybe tell how long they might need to, how much further time they might need to go if they weren't done at that six month time period. As far as including staff, this plan was submitted to staff to ask for feedback, and no feedback was given.
Can I follow up?
Ms. Quinnow, yes.
Sorry. I hear what you're saying, and I understand what, what you're going for is, you know, to, to make it easy to identify and simplify to find that success. I'm totally understanding what you're saying. And I think that Mr. Waters' intent when writing this, because he did the majority of the writing, I, I was just there going along for the ride. But I did look for this, or I did get to oversee this as well. What I gathered was that it wasn't necessarily that this was going to be so global that it would be something that would be forever long, but that we have heard a lot of committee, or I'm sorry, community members who, in fact, a couple of emails came through regarding the type of tree that they were replacing it with and how that particular tree was not necessarily the best tree for, in that environment. So perhaps while Mr. Schreiner does have a really good plan of action as far as the replacement of the trees, I think that the committee or the ad hoc committee could have some valuable input that may be worth considering.
If I, if there is a solution, you know, here, you can, there's nothing to be said that, that the committee cannot start out with a specific goal, if the goal is to have a report back to it on maintenance, preservation, and even replacement of street trees following a reconstruction, during and following a reconstruction project. And the council can receive that input. And after that initial charge has been fulfilled, the council can provide additional topics that it would like the committee to explore, essentially extend it with another topic area to explore and issue recommendations on. So if, that may be a solution for the council to consider if you want to have the committee take it in pieces and provide, you know, recommendations on certain policy topics at a time.
Go ahead. Thank you. I think that's a good suggestion. And I guess with that, I'd like to propose an amendment to Resolution 23-61. In the fifth whereas, it reads, "The city council desires to review and consider options for short-term and long-term maintenance and preservation of the city." And I would propose to insert "street trees" and then insert "during and after" "street and utility construction and reconstruction." And then down in Section 1, similarly, this would be to kind of refine the scope. So in Section 1 would be called the City Street Trees Committee. And then, let's see, in the fourth line, to talk about preservation needs of the city street trees during and after street and utility projects. So I propose to amend the resolution to narrow the scope in those two places.
Ms. Curler?
Yes.
Do you mind reading the new language again?
Sure.
In full? I'm sorry to do that to you.
No, that's all right. That's all right. So again, my amendment would be in the fifth whereas. So it would read, "The city council desires to review and consider options for short-term and long-term maintenance and preservation of the city's street trees during and after street and utility construction and reconstruction," which takes into account, et cetera. And then under Section 1, to revise it to read, "Ad hoc committee, City Street Trees Committee," that the city hereby establishes an ad hoc committee to be known as the City Street Trees Committee, "which is organized to review the potential short-term and long-term maintenance and preservation needs of the city's street trees during and after street and utility projects, recognizing the collective, et cetera."
Do you want to change the title of the resolution?
Sure, we could change the, I could add to the amendment. It's the last line of the title, Woodread City Street Trees. So that's my proposed amendment.
Ms. Curler, can I ask a follow-up question about that?
Sure.
You noted that it was "during and after" street construction? Wondering if we should have it to where we give, or they evaluate the situation prior? So that the, the committee has an opportunity to identify what trees are at risk and go in with knowing that these are the trees that are potentially at risk. Let's evaluate the situation before the street construction even gets going.
I'm comfortable with that. I could say before, during, and after. I think the fact that the context is maintenance and preservation means that we're trying to keep existing trees. So, but to say before, during, and after, that's, that would be fine.
Could I, just for clarification, I just want to make sure that the, the committee will be kind of coming up with a policy for it. But it's, my understanding is that the committee won't be, it's not like we'll submit a street project to the committee for evaluation on specific, something specific to the project, but they'll be setting the policy on how we handle all projects moving forward. So we won't have anything, we won't, by the time they start their work, we won't have, you know, the full design of Milton Street ready to bring to them to evaluate, you know, those plans for something that, my understanding is the goal would be to have, you know, those policies set in place to be applied to every project moving forward during the design phase so that it's kind of codified in policy from the point it's adopted forward.
That makes sense.
I'm glad you clarified that, because now that's making me wonder, not to get too complicated, but in Section 2, maybe should also be clarified that, that, or reinforce that we're asking the, the committee to present policy options on a recommendation. We're not, not asking them to serve as a standing committee that reviews every construction plan, you know, construction plans for every project. That's not, that wouldn't be their role. That's the public works board's role traditionally.
Ms. Curler, Mr. Fields had some.
Mr. Fields, yeah?
I guess that was one of my questions I was going to try and bring up, but thanks, Drake, that is exactly spot on. I guess my concern was if they were looking at each project, that it had the potential would just delay any projects. I'm looking at more of a policy to say, this is how we should address projects, not get each one surveyed by the committee, if that makes sense? That it's kind of set in a policy of best standards, best practice?
Yeah, the intent is policy, not a standing committee.
Okay.
Ms. Curler, if I may make a comment on your proposed language? So, and this is in relation to Mr. Drescher's comment too. I, I just looked up the statute and it does talk about, the statute does also say "street trees." So then I found the definition, and "street trees" is a defined term in our code. Is it your intent by changing the language in the resolution to "street trees" to mirror and either imply or infer that definition in the code? And I can read it if you would like to see.
I did not look up that definition. So I guess I was using a, I, I consider trees on the terrace as "street trees," but I don't know if that's how our ordinance defines them, so.
Sure, let me read it real quick if that's helpful. So it's Section 594-3 definitions, "street trees," "trees on public rights of way between the curb and property line alongside of trees or medians of all streets, avenues, or ways within the city." And then the master street plan that Mr. Drescher referenced, I was trying to read it quickly, but that's Section 594-9. And when we're talking about now the scope of this resolution along with your proposed language, I think what ultimately we need to be asking for, based on the biggest issue in front of us from constituents, is along the lines of, okay, what's the plan for reconstruction for preserving these trees? And then based on that plan, what recommendations does this ad hoc committee make to change this section of the ordinance to put it in our code? So that's what I would like to see this ad hoc committee do. I am honestly not prepared tonight to make additional language recommendations. So that's kind of where I stand right now, but I'm open to further discussion on these points, if there's any, or anything else people have.
Ms. Bishop, if I may, I, I think you're spot on with that statement. One of the biggest, word that jumps off the page in the resolution is preservation. I've, I've found it that, that's not in the master tree, tree street plan, or master street tree plan language, master tree plan language. There's an awful lot of discretion that is afforded your forester, there's an awful lot, your arborist, there's an awful lot of discretion that is afforded the director of grounds and facilities. And I think the policy statement is what's important here. Just a statement from the council of the body stating that it is now our goal to preserve as much as possible street trees is different, is an amendment to what the ordinance currently says. So the conversation is wholly appropriate. Direction from an ad hoc committee is wholly appropriate. What you do with that information is your choice. But I, I would suggest that you definitely stay within the bounds of, A, what exists or have a plan to ultimately amend that language if necessary, as necessary.
I appreciate that you brought that up, because I was considering that in another amendment, when we were talking about the master street tree plan, that we, my, my thought would be to separately direct the city manager to update the master street tree plan on a similar timeline to when this ad hoc committee is working on their policy recommendations, so that those are both happening concurrently. But I think it's too much to ask an ad hoc committee to get that all done by mid-2024. And I also don't want to sidestep the Parks Board and their rule in reviewing the tree plan, which would typically be, be done by that committee. So again, I guess I'm just trying to think about how to make sure that we're meeting the highest needs of the issues that the public has brought to us, and also try to get it done, you know, a manageable timeline so that it can inform our next street construction project.
Ms. Curler?
Yeah?
The purpose that this was drawn up for was because there are a lot of mature trees out there in our city, that a lot of community members were concerned about whether or not they would be preserved. And I hear what you're saying, Mr. Drescher. I'm wondering if that, in Section 1, where it says, the city, this is before your proposed amendment, "The city trees committee, which is organized to review the potential short-term and long-term maintenance and preservation needs, could be changed to 'and slash or' preservation needs." Would that satisfy the, the, the concern that you have, Mr. Drescher, about the?
I think you're misunderstanding my point.
Perhaps.
I'm, I'm not concerned. I think what everybody needs here is direction. What do you want? Okay? If your goal is to preserve more street trees, then include that in your policy, ultimately amend an ordinance in accordance with that. Be clear on what your expectations from this ad hoc committee are prior to formation and charging them with a duty.
So in here, okay, go ahead.
Well, what I just heard you describe, Ms. Quinnow, is different than what I heard Mr. Waters describe in the impetus for this resolution. And so I think that's what I'm trying to get clarity on and make sure that we're giving clarity to this committee. Are we asking them to work on an issue related to street reconstruction, or are we, are we asking them to work on all things trees? And it reads to me like it's all things trees. And I think that's too big to tackle in a timeline that we need for, for our next street reconstruction. So that's why I'm thinking if we can narrow the scope, and as somebody said, Mr. Daly perhaps, that, you know, we could always add something else on or have the Parks Board concurrently working on the ordinance, potential ordinance revisions, so that, you know, there's plenty of people being able to get the work done.
Yeah, I guess just for example purposes, you had mentioned the, the committee working on the street reconstruction, kind of maintenance, preservation, replacement track of things, and simultaneously asking that staff begin, you know, drafting some updates to the street tree master plan. If all things work out and they conclude at around the same time, the committee will have completed their first task that you assigned them. At that point, you know, I can't promise you, you know, there's other duties that may come up at that point, then staff may have completed a draft of potential changes to the street tree master plan that the council could at that point say, okay, the committee has completed this policy topic area that we wanted advice on earlier. Now you have this new draft that the staff has presented to us. Let's refer that to the committee and extend it, you know, a little bit further for them to evaluate that and come up with, you know, recommendations for that next policy topic area for the council to consider. So it, it's kind of breaking up the policy areas of interest that the council has and is seeking feedback on, breaks them up and provides them at different times, but sets, you know, benchmarks, I guess you could say, of what gets accomplished first and then what comes after. That's just a possibility.
Mr. Fields?
I guess following up with Drake said, how do we bring all these groups together? You know, when I first read to this, you know, I like the idea of preserving our trees, but there are conflicts at times. And we're hearing, and I had almost exactly as many emails about expanding the width of our streets and putting bike lanes in as I did for preserving the trees. But if I widen the roads and put in four-foot wide bike lanes, that means I got to take down trees. So how do we get these two groups working together so we have a good coherent policy saying, where's our happy medium? I mean, there's instances, we're going to have to take down trees if we're redoing roads, no doubt about it. Should we preserve them as much as possible, within reason? Because if I spend $20,000 trying to save a tree, I can plant a lot of trees for $20,000 that my grandkids are going to enjoy. So how do we get that balance and get all these groups together? Because it's not possible to make everybody happy all the time. Just be honest.
Mr. Waters?
First off, I didn't hear anybody say that we're going to be widening streets for bikes, infrastructure. I, I'm pretty sure that wasn't stated anywhere. But to get to the tree issue, I, I think that we're looking at, I, I think the preservation aspect is, is important. I, I think that, that we're not looking to necessarily change any policies that are codes that are out there. I, I think what we're looking at is, is making recommendations to this, to this city council and reviewing what is the proper actions that maybe we could take to help with the tree situation, the city tree. to help with the tree situation, the city tree situation that we've been experiencing over the last three, four, five years. So that's the intent here. It's not to change existing policy necessarily. I mean, maybe there would be a recommendation that comes back that says, "Hey, we should review this policy." But I don't think that this resolution is going there. Does that make sense?
I would imagine that there would be some recommendations that would come out of it for suggested policy changes that could require amendments to our code. So I think if I, you know, the most important piece is how they get implemented, right? So after we have some evaluation of what is... The committee is hoping to achieve, to achieve the policy goals of the city council with their recommendations on how to do that, how to best, I guess just going off the title, maintain and preserve the city street trees. Then I've also heard, you know, replacement of city trees as well talked about. There will have to be a conversation about where that gets codified. So there may likely, I don't, that's probably not fair. There could be changes to the city code that are necessary in order to codify that into the city's ordinances to make sure that it's enforceable through that aspect of it, as well as non-ordinance policies that the city may maintain in the forestry office to ensure that those operations and procedures are adequately followed to facilitate and fulfill those policy goals. So I hope that answers your question in that. The main, I think the main question coming back is what is the committee going to be focusing on? And what policy areas is the city council looking for feedback on? And is that related to the preservation and maintenance and replacement of street trees during, you know, projects is one? Or the broader scope of the entire urban forest is a little different, but the most times we're going to see significant removal of trees is during a reconstruction project. We do have times where they interfere with, you know, a piece of infrastructure and come down during the year, but it's not going to be what you would see during a reconstruction project. So it's more what topic areas the city council is looking for feedback on that I think would be the most beneficial for the committee to understand, what is it looking to provide you? If that's broader, then, you know, we can try and make that work. If it's more specific, then that changes how staff will advise this committee and the process that it goes through.
Ms. Quinnow? In listening to everyone's points of view, and I'm sorry that if my opinion sounded different than Mr. Waters, what I was doing was reflecting on what I was hearing. What I'm hearing that needs to be said that's a little bit more clear is mostly for Section 1, where there it says, "Which is organized to review." And what I'd like to do is propose changing that to, to review.
Let me just interrupt because there's an amendment on the table already that I don't think it's been seconded. So I don't know if anyone wants to second it or... I could repeat it because it may, I don't know, it may be similar to what you're saying or...
Well, it might be.
Why don't you just share what your thoughts are?
It should be a different, probably, a different motion, wouldn't it?
Okay, and what?
I'm sorry to interrupt. We likely should dispense with the current motion on the floor. Some leeway is fine, but we have a motion. If there's interest in a second, we should move forward on that vein first before we talk about another motion.
Okay, well, Ms. Curler, you made the motion, and I agree with the scope narrowing. So I will second your motion there, and we can move forward on that item.
Okay, so there is a motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop, to amend Resolution 23-61, which was changing language in the fifth, whereas, and in Section 1, to refer to during and after street and utility projects. Hopefully, people got the language.
Hi, Ms. Curler, can I just ask?
Yes.
I believe you would also maybe entertain putting it in the title, the word "street"?
Yes, and the title, yes. So and where it refers to city trees throughout, changing that to city street trees in those three sections.
Okay, and then just to clarify, I know that you were, maybe you were going to add "prior," but you're just keeping it during and after, correct?
Well, that was my original amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Was during and after.
And my second remains, Misty, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So is there any further discussion on that amendment?
So I think I stated my reasons earlier for why I would second that, and my reasons will also stay and that, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, so can we have a roll call vote on the proposed amendment, Resolution 23-61?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2.
Okay, now, Ms. Quinnow, did you want to make another amendment?
Would. Under Section 1, "The committee is organized to review an evaluation method to determine the best practices in relation to the mature trees of concern with regard to street construction as well as future infrastructure projects." That is my proposed more specific direction.
One more time?
Yep. The city's street-trees committee, this is reading from Section 1, the second line, "which is organized to create an evaluation method to determine best practices in relation to the mature trees of concern with regard to street construction as well as future infrastructure projects." And I can take out "future" if that's what it takes.
And then is that period? Does it include any of the rest of the material there?
I don't believe it's necessary to include the rest of it. I think that it's kind of a given. So I would strike the short-term and long-term maintenance and preservation needs of the city street trees in recognizing the collective ecological, environmental, economic, cultural, and social contributions to our community. Those things are, in my opinion, part of what this committee would do in general. It doesn't need to be said.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Quinnow, is there a second? Okay, no second. Any further discussion on Motion 23-61 as amended?
Can I have a quick moment here?
Yep.
Just to review. I'll second.
So you're seconding Ms. Quinnow's proposed amendment?
Yes.
Could you read that amendment one more time, please?
If you can, I'm not sure I got it.
Me?
Yeah.
Section 1, "That the city hereby establishes an ad hoc committee to be known as the City Street Trees Committee, which is organized to create an evaluation method to determine best practices in relation to the mature trees of concern with regard to street construction as well as future infrastructure projects."
Is that the intent of this ad hoc committee? That is exactly the question. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the chosen language there. I don't believe that the ad hoc committee was intended to... I guess read it one more time, but you're talking about evaluating and essentially enforcement, from what I heard.
No.
Okay.
Creating an evaluation method.
So essentially, a way to determine when and why a street tree would be removed?
Perhaps recommend a valuation method then. Create and recommend an evaluation method then. I am concerned with regard to the existing authority that exists, both in the forester, the arborist, and the director of parks and facility, and the ability and the discretion that they have in making such determinations at this point. And I have the same concern that was previously stated with regard to this running awry of the local ordinances that currently exist. So if you want them to evaluate that circumstance in light of the ordinances and make a recommendation to this body, I think more specific language there is probably appropriate. The council is tasked with creating policy. An ad hoc committee certainly can make a recommendation to the council. So I'm leery of changing the ordinances by resolution.
So you would like me to remove the word "creating" and instead insert "recommend"?
I think create and recommend.
Create and recommend.
It can draft one and recommend that the city council adopt it, but what Attorney Drescher is saying is that it can't create one, and that goes into effect without council action following that. So it's simply clarifying, adding clarification that it's a recommendation, that the committee is offering a recommendation, not implementing a policy change. It's not creating this evaluation tool and that tool immediately going into effect.
Okay. Do I, since it's already been seconded, do I need to...
I'll withdraw my second.
Thanks. Okay, so I move to amend Resolution... Sorry, got to scroll. Resolution 23-61 in Section 1, including the language after, "which is organized to include, to create and recommend an evaluation method to determine best practices in relation to the mature trees of concern with regard to street construction as well as future infrastructure projects." And I'm looking to make sure there isn't other language in perhaps Section 2 that could be amended to reflect this change in language. So please give me a moment. At this time, I don't see anything in Section 2 that I would wish to change or amend in reflection of this change or amendment for Section 1. However, if someone wishes to seek out clarity for Section 2 because of what I amended for Section 1 or what I'm recommending as amendment for Section 1, please say so.
Okay, so we have a clarified amendment proposed by Ms. Quinnow, is there a second? Okay, so I'm not hearing a second? Okay, Mr. Fields?
The concept of the language, I understand it. I agree with what you're doing. I guess I'm just stepping back and I'm putting myself in a parks director and a forestry position, thinking you're basically second guessing what they're doing right now. So if this moves forward, I definitely would hope that them, those folks are involved in this and don't put them in a pickle where it seems like you're second guessing all their decisions or you're trying to change... I mean, they're professionals at what they do also, that's why we hire them. So I guess my only concern is that it looks like we're second guessing what they're doing.
With respect, I agree that it would look like that. However, in Section 2, there was specifically mentioned input from city staff, city departments, boards, committees, or commissions, as well as documentation and reports. It nets, the purpose I saw, the purpose of this in my language here was not to second guess the people who do the job. It was to create an evaluation method to help community members understand why. As of right now, the community members are getting the, are potentially getting the answer of, "Because this is what we have decided." And while we are honoring, I mean, I'm a teacher. I get questioned on whether or not I know what I'm doing often. It's not personal.
Mrs. Bishop?
There's definitely a need for this to be looked at. Community members need to have input in how we move forward. I didn't know until tonight that there was an ordinance section on the master street-tree plan. I feel like the whole issue doesn't need to be resolved tonight. There's no harm in waiting until the next meeting so that we can take into account each other's comments on the issue. I would like to do a little more research in the code as well, personally. I would like to make an amendment to table the creation of this ad hoc committee and the vote on that until the next meeting.
Okay, so Mrs. Bishop, you're proposing to table Resolution 23-61 to the next meeting?
Correct.
I will second that. Is there any discussion? And I guess maybe in the discussion, I'll just say, "Thank you, Mr. Waters and Ms. Quinnow, for the time and effort you've put into creating this, and I really appreciate everyone's discussion and the community input that we're having." So if you want to, you know, work on it further and bring us something different for next time, or if we want to pick up where we left off, I think either way is perfectly fine with me. I don't know how other council members feel, but I think we definitely would have flexibility to look at where we left off tonight or to look at something different if we want to think about that. Any other discussion on the motion to table?
I would just make one point. If you're tabling, I believe you're tabling the motion as amended currently. There was a passage of Curler's amendment, so I just note that.
That's a good point, yes. So I would move to table Resolution 23-61 as amended until the next meeting.
And I'm seconding that, and for clarification, it was actually amended twice, I think, so. And...
So that counters what you just said, by the way?
Pardon?
As far as going back and reworking, reworking it?
Well, I guess that wasn't my intention. So we're leaving it where, as far as it got amended tonight, we're tabling it at that point. If you want to work on it further, that's great, and introduce... If you wanna work on it further, that's great, and introduce something different. If you wanna pick it up where we've left it tonight, I guess those were my suggestions for what to do next.
Okay.
But I'm very flexible if you wanna bring something completely different based on our discussions.
Sure, and definitely, since it has been amended twice now, what I would like to see in the packet for the next meeting is that new language in the amended resolution for clarity for everyone as to what we're discussing. And I agree with Ms. Kurler, too. If, if there's a supplemental draft that is presented, I'm okay with looking at that, too. I just wanna have time to incorporate everything that's sort of been discussed and figure out the best way forward before I make a decision tonight. Because as we've seen with RFPs and other things, if something's too broad, you're not gonna get a product back that is useful and actionable. And so I don't wanna waste anybody's time in doing this or creating an ad hoc committee that comes up with something that was not what we as a council had envisioned as being useful for the Parks and Forestry Director or Street Department or anybody else.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to table? Okay, Misty, can we have a roll call vote to table, on the motion to table resolution 23 dash 61 as amended?
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So we'll look forward to talking about that further at our next meeting. So the next agenda item is letter H, which is ordinance 1256, City of Lake Mills 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This is the first reading. So Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
Ordinance 1256 and ordinance to adopt the City of Lake Mills Comprehensive Plan 2040, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, so this is just the first reading tonight. Drake, you can just walk us through where we're at and any, then any discussion that we wanna have based on public comment.
So first reading of the ordinance, your discussion capabilities are pretty much wide open on the document that's before you. It comes back to you from the Plan Commission. It incorporated some of the suggestions from the city council, the city council's last discussion, and didn't incorporate others. You've heard a fair bit about the bike plan or the bicycle infrastructure, bicycle section. So a specific map was not included of bicycle routes in the comprehensive plan by, that's been sent back to you by the Plan Commission. So the city council can choose to proceed to a second reading, it can choose not to proceed to a second reading, and vote to send it back to the Plan Commission for further revisions. So either path is available to you tonight. And really, up until adoption, following the third reading, the council can choose to send it back to the Plan Commission. So if you have questions, Brian Kranza is available. Otherwise, I would, in, send it, bring, send it back to the city council for your discussion and answer any questions that you may have on it.
Okay, is there any questions on the ordinance 1256 and the latest draft version of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan? Mr. Waters?
The council sent a list of recommendations back to the Plan and Commission to review and hopefully adapt into the comprehensive plan. Some of these requests were included in tonight's revised plan, while others were not. I guess it's a good start, but we still have some work to do before a 200-page plan that helps to guide Lake Mills' decisions over the next 10 years should be approved. As Ms. Kurler pointed out in her editorial this past week, Lake Mills has an abundance of active and engaged citizens who are working together to make a city vibrant, to make our city a vibrant place to live, work, and play. She pointed out how fortunate we are to have over 700 residents to the comprehensive plan survey, respond to the comprehensive plan survey. But all this engagement only works if we take this wonderful information that was gathered and implement the best ideas into a plan with action steps to move our community forward. When reviewing the survey, several topics rose to the top for me. One was small-town values with Hurst historic preservation. Another was recreational infrastructure for bicycles and pedestrians. Another was how important Rock Lake and Sandy Beach are to our community. Another was the high cost of living here in the city of Lake Mills. And then the communication, is city leadership really listening? Other high-flying issues included EMS services, sentry site development, library, city pool, and affordable housing. So how are we doing with this survey information? Are we listening to our active and engaged citizens who took their time to give us their feedback? On small-town values, this council asked for the small growth initiatives to be implemented throughout the document. This was revised and agreed upon in the recent Plan and Commission review. The implementation plans do outline the preservation of historic resources and enforcement of city's ex territorial subdivision review authority. It also asks for implementation of recommendations of the Northside Neighborhood Development Plan, which expands Lake Mills north of the interstate. I would like to see the implementation language softened to a review of this document. On the recreational infrastructure, the council asked for the original language of the bicycle infrastructure and the bicycle map to be included in the document, as the survey showed 86.66% support for these type of pathways. The implementation plan states that a periodic update and implement the transportation improvements in accordance with chapter four, Transportation, City of Lake Mills Long Range Transportation Plan, Bicycle Plan, and Sidewalk Plan. I would like to see the bicycle plan included, as is 10 other maps from various city documents, including the jurisdiction boundaries, agriculture soils, Glacial Heritage Area Map, natural features, historic districts in Lake Mills, existing land use, future land use, road network, Lake Mills area school district boundary, tax incremental district boundaries. This inclusion will help with the grant writing to support the community interest and improve infrastructure within our city. On page 406, the red line note indicates commented BC 19, Plan Commission recommended clarifying, clarifying that the transportation plan does not recommend consulting with subordinate boards by revising this sentence. I don't think that's a correct statement. To me, this still looks like it should be represented as a part of the sidewalk. To me, it looks like this is still being represented as part of the sidewalk plan and needs to be separated separately. Maybe the document should state that the future sidewalk plan should consider these factors. On page 410, city council asked for an example to be removed. Instead of the sentence being removed, the word example was removed. So I think we should police, we should strike this sentence. The city should provide online bicycle facilities along Oak Street across Lake Street. On Rock Lake and Sandy Beach, the implementation plan states, work with Wisconsin DNR on issues affecting the state fish hatchery, dam management, and implementation of the Assafellon State Park Master Plan. The city council recently asked the Joint Rock Lake Committee to review Rock Lake water levels and make recommendations. I'd like to see an implementation plan that is directly related to the preservation of Rock Lake and the connecting bodies of waters and aquifers. It's also important to provide Lake Mills residents with access opportunities to Rock Lake, which should tie to Sandy Beach, Bartles Beach, and Mill Pond. On the cost of living in Lake Mills, the implementation plan includes evaluating alternatives for future wastewater treatment facility improvements, considering the creation of a stormwater management utility, considering the expansion of electric service area, and continuing to explore opportunities for more efficient provisions of municipal services, facilities, and utilities throughout the cooperative agreement with other municipalities. I personally don't like the idea of introducing new tax structure in this document without recognizing the full impact on our citizens. The document outlines the benefits of a stormwater management system, but does not mention the complicated approval process of going to a referendum and the direct slash hidden costs related to the plan. These factors should be fairly represented in this document for city council review, or the stormwater management utility should be removed from the document. On communication, the implementation states coordinate with Lake Mills Area School District and other civic organizations to bring new civic facilities to the city. For example, new public schools, a community center, and other parks and recreation facilities. Why city and school politics are separate, do we need to cross the line and include new public schools in our comprehensive plan? I suggest we revise this statement to honor the separation. Hopefully, the community thinks we are listening and ensuring the comprehensive plan properly reflects the wishes and desires for Lake Mills over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Thank you, Mr. Waters. Would anyone else like to ask any questions or make any comments at this time of first Okay, then this will be on our agenda for our next meeting for a second reading.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I motion that we return the September 5, 2023 version of the comprehensive plan to the Plan Commission to be modified, revised, or amended with the attached recommendations from city council as I just outlined.
Okay, Mr. Waters has made a motion to return the comprehensive plan to the Plan Commission with the list of concerns that he read out a moment ago.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Fields. Is there any discussion?
Mrs. Bishop. It seems to me that there are some procedural and other issues with the, trying to force a statement on bike routes and lanes in this comp plan. The comp plan talks extensively about transportation, including bicycles. It talks about the various methods to include bicyclists in our city. Sheroes, bike lanes, routes, paths. It mentions the corp, the, I'm gonna screw up what that stands for, but essentially the rec plan.
Outdoor Recreation Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Kurler. Don't put me on the spot for abbreviations. It mentions the Lake Mills Bike Plan, which was passed in 2005. It mentions the Long Range Transportation Plan, which was also created in 2005. Both, well, all three of those documents, but most specifically, the Lake Mills Bike Plan, which is 30 pages, talks specifically about what roads should be considered for bicyclists, which roads are safe, which roads may not be safe. The Lake Mills Bike Plan says specifically that East Lake Street is not a safe route for children. If we're talking about creating safe bike paths for children, we can't possibly implement that road specifically in a comp plan. The specifics that are being asked for from our constituents, I take those seriously and I take those to heart. I have small children who will eventually be riding on these streets. There does need to be a bike plan that's comprehensive for the city. Shoehorning it into the next couple of meetings at a Plan Commission and the city council are not the way to do that. Honestly, they're just not. It's like trying to take the wastewater treatment plant and picking a location and a size and a method of filtering the stuff, you know, and saying, we're gonna do that, we're gonna put this in the comp plan, when we don't have those plans. We simply don't have the plans for a bike route that Mr. Waters and others are saying necessitate be included in this plan. If we want grant funds, and I've looked at the TAP grant requirements and other federal requirements for bike infrastructure, you don't have to have it in the comp plan. You have to have a resolution passed by the legislative-making body. We do those resolutions all the time. We did one, the last one, I wrote it down, was in 2019 or 2020. I wrote it on some sheet of paper, but it was for a similar thing, and it has to list the specific project. So when we're doing a project, for instance, I'm gonna make one up, but the one-off brewster where we're adding sidewalk there, that's a, I don't remember if we specifically did a TAP grant application for that. We have to pass specific resolutions. You have to pass a specific resolution for being a tree city. And when we get that project, that's the time to do that, to make that grant application for that specific project, for that specific bike lane path, shero, however you want to do it at that point in time, based on recommendations from subordinate committees. Not because we shoehorned it into a plan here that we don't know the further implications of.
I guess I'd like to add some thoughts on this. And one, one is a, I don't know, it's a question slash comment, but I think we're all experiencing the tension between the role of the Plan Commission as the body that is given the authority by state statute to prepare the comprehensive plan and the role of the city council to approve it or send it back to them. And so we've sent back things that we asked them to modify, and they did not choose to modify all of them, and they had some reasons why. I don't know all of the reasons. Mrs. Bishop might know further from her time working on the Plan Commission, but I know particularly with respect to the bicycle map, at the last Plan Commission meeting, the discussion was that the Plan Commission, during the development process of the comprehensive plan, felt that they had received a lot of input asking to not have the map included. And so that's why they chose to not include the map. Now, we're getting lots of comments at the council level, which are equally valid, asking us to include it. So I'm feeling this tension, and I'm, I'm not quite sure how to resolve it. But I guess more generally, with respect to your motion this evening, Mr. Waters, I appreciate all the items you've listed. I would like to take the time to consider those. I did not take opious notes, so I don't feel like I'm prepared tonight to vote yes on sending it back to the Plan Commission, because I would wanna go through your list again and go through the plan again and consider those. So I don't feel like I'm prepared to vote to send it back to the Plan Commission this evening. Mr. Waters?
I, I think an important factor here is the community feedback element. We, at council, we hear feedback a lot of times from squeaky wheels that aren't necessarily the, the majority of the community. Here we did a survey that cost some money, and the survey was to guide us on the comprehensive plan. That survey overwhelmingly stated that bicycle infrastructure is important to this community to the percentage of like 87%. So 87% is saying, yes, we support infrastructure. To help with that infrastructure, a bicycle map included in the comprehensive plan is key. I mean, it, it will help us along this way. Also, in relationship to the East Lake Street, it is, it is quoted in the bicycle plan and it is quoted in the Jefferson County plan. I'm not sure where Mrs. Bishop is getting her reference to why it's not suitable for bicycling, but it is included in both those plans.
Page 2 dash 14.
In the bicycle plan?
That's correct, yes. That's correct, yes. So if we're looking at, I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Waters, so I'll wait until you're finished. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Did you want to say something else?
No, I just, you know, if we're looking at what is safe for children, how do we do the best transportation for bicyclists, you know, if we have a report that says East Lake Street is a main artery and it is not safe for children, yet the map that people are saying now they want included in the comp plan to get grant funds to put in a bike lane or a shero or a path or a route on, for instance, East Lake Street, but it's not safe, like, I don't understand how, this is what you want, but you also want something safe, but we're going to put this in the comp plan without any further discussion from subordinate boards. Like, we can make a resolution at the next meeting, if it's on the agenda, when we come up with future agenda items, to send this back to the Public Works Board to address the long-range transportation plan and look at the Lake Mills Bike Plan and come up with recommendations. You don't have to have something in a comp plan to do those things. There's nothing in the comp plan. There's 107 mention of bikes and bicycles in the comprehensive plan. We are saying this is important. We have taken this into account.
Do you agree that the bicycle map is part of the bicycle plan?
There is a map on 2-7, which is Figure 2.03-1, Proposed Multi-Use Trails. In the Lake Mills Bicycle Plan, I do not believe it is the exact same as the proposed map for the comprehensive plan. I will continue looking at the rest of them.
Maybe I could add, and I don't want to mischaracterize comments from other Plan Commission members, but when this was discussed at the last Plan Commission, there was concern from a couple of members that the constituents that they heard from during the process of developing the different chapters expressed objections to the map. And East Lake Street was not the only street that was objected to. And so they felt, the Plan Commission members that spoke to this at our last meeting, felt that they were being responsive to the public who had come to the Plan Commission. And so therefore, to put the map back in, to them felt like they weren't being responsive to that. So there's the, as you said, Mr. Waters, you know, there's the people who completed the survey, and there's people who came to the Plan Commission and commented, and they were trying to balance all of that, and that was the balance that they came up with, was to not include the map.
Just to complete my other statement, there is also a map on 2-13. I do not believe it is the exact same, although I have not specifically cross-referenced it. So that's where I stand on that. Those are the two maps listed in the bike plan, and like I said, I don't believe they're the exact same. They may be. You're smiling at me. I'm not sure, but I don't have the other map in front of me to look at it right now.
Okay, so we have a motion to return the comprehensive plan to the Plan Commission to address the list of issues that Mr. Waters raised. Is there any other discussion or comments on that motion?
Ms. Curler, I would like to follow up with what you said and say that I really would like to fine-tooth comb what you had said. You had a lot of great points. I want to really make sure that I read them, because I can hear them and I can listen to them, but I need to read them to maybe understand all of the things. So please know that my vote today is not because I don't agree. I don't want to put the cart before the horse. I want to read it. So if you could please make sure that that statement gets distributed to us, I think that would be helpful.
Can I?
Yes, Mr. Daley.
It's a parliamentary procedure item. I just want to clarify, I'm not certain, without doing additional research, that if this motion were to fail tonight, that it would be able to be brought back at a subsequent meeting, or if it would require a subsequent action to revisit it. I just want to make you aware, I'm not, I'm not in a position right now to tell you whether or not, what a motion tonight, if it were not to pass, would do for future action on this item. So I just wanted to make you aware that I don't know right now. So I can certainly, I can have that information ready for you by the time of the second reading if the motion maker in the second chose to withdraw it. Otherwise, I'll still bring the information to you at the second reading, but it'll be after it would have to occurred. So I just, I can't recall right now, based off of my memory of Roberts Rules, if like a motion to reconsider or a motion to, you know, withdraw previous action, something of those lines would be necessary before the motion from this meeting tonight could be revisited.
Mr. Waters, I do not want to preclude the opportunity to return this document to the Plan Commission at some point in time. And I feel that it may fail tonight, and I'm wondering if you would consider withdrawing your motion tonight so that we can all have more time to consider your comments, and you could potentially make the motion again at the next meeting.
Mr. Fields, did you have a comment?
I was going to ask if it was procedure, would it be appropriate to table this motion to send it back until the next meeting?
You could postpone to a date certain, certainly, and then this specific motion would be revisited then. It would so, it would remain on the table, so to speak, and then at the next meeting, that is where the conversation would be picked up, is whether to refer it back.
Okay, so that would be an option, is to leave the motion out there but not take action on it?
That would require a subsequent motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Okay.
But yes.
So I have been comparing the proposed map and the comprehensive plan, which is labeled as Map 4-2 Bicycle and Pedestrian Network. The first point is that the recommendation to the Plan Commission was also that the labeling of this map should be changed if it is included, which of course, they declined to include it. But secondarily, comparing and contrasting it with the map on the bike plan, one is in color, one is not. The comp plan, one is in color. The bicycle plan map from 2005 appears to have many of the same roads marked as proposed bike or for proposed bike utilization. I won't use path or route because those terms are used in many different ways here. But on the bike plan, it does label specifically, like, some roads should be routes, vice, some roads should be bike paths, vice, other methods of bicycle transportation on certain areas of the map. And that is not transposed directly onto the proposed map for the comp plan. So they are not technically the same. Which means the recommendations from the Lake Mills Bike Plan are not the same as what's being made in the comp plan.
It was my understanding that it was the same as the bike plan, and that was why it was being included. But maybe the consultant revised that somehow. I'm not sure.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion to table this motion until our next meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields to table the motion to return the comp plan to the Plan Commission. A yes vote right now would mean that you agree with tabling for this evening. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Bishop, did you have anything?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Let's do a roll call on the motion to table.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinough?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And is there a way that we can get, even Mr. Waters, have you send your remarks to the city manager to distribute to us, or a summary of the bullet points, however you would like to proceed with sharing that? Thank you. Okay, so we are on to Agenda Item Number 10, which is recommendations for future agendas.
Can I make clarity there?
Yes, please.
So I think we just completed the first reading, so the next meeting would include the, it would be the second reading, correct? Okay, just wanted to have clarity on that.
And then we, thank you for clarifying that. So we will be at the second reading of ordinance 1256, and then there would be a tabled motion that someone wouldn't, if interested, would need to remove from the table. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, did I miss anything else on that? Thank you for clarifying. Okay, recommendations for future agendas, comprehensive plan, a second reading, the City Tree Policy Ad-Hoc Committee. We discussed those tonight, so we know we'll have those. Mr. Daley, what else have you got for us?
2024 initial budget presentation. And then I also believe, if you recall, several months ago, the City Council was awarded a grant under the Heartland Initiative through Jefferson County Economic Development. That consultant has completed their review of the zoning code and has presented a document to me with recommendations regarding how the zoning code might be able to be amended, changed, revised, to best promote more affordable development. And so that presentation is currently scheduled for that night as well.
Thank you. We also received a report from Joint Rock Lake Committee regarding water levels and their report back to the council, and they've asked to be on our next agenda to present that to us. So we'll put that on the agenda. Anything else that people are aware of or would like to suggest?
Well, in the future, we need to have a resolution going back to the Public Works Board to discuss further bike lanes and paths and how they want to address that, based on previous reports, or if we need to commission a new one. I mean, circumstances have changed. We have a bigger population here that all need to be taken into account, what roads are the best roads for this.
Okay. So updating the bicycle plan. Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 11, to convene into closed session to discuss emergency medical services intergovernmental agreements pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So can I have a motion to convene into closed session?
I move to convene into closed session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quinough, seconded by Mr. Waters. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Okay, that's 5-0. So we'll be turning the TV recording off at this point. Go into closed session. We'll reconvene off of television and then adjourn for the evening. Thank you, everyone.